Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for September 15th, 2022. As you can see, I am not Mayor Giles. He's in Washington, DC on city business and he's excused from this meeting. And all our other council members are present. So we will begin our study session by looking at our agenda for Monday, September 19th. And so, council, what items would we like to look at? Yes, Councilmember Thompson.
I'd like to have RJ talk us through 5A. I know Councilmember Freeman also has questions on this same item, RJ. But my concern really revolves around the timing of the project. Because I know Elliott Road is on the CIP list to be widened. So are we doing the drainage in conjunction with the widening? Or is MAG proposing to fund this with flood control to get this installed before?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson. Elliott Road, it's a combination. This is actually in agreement with MAG for the reimbursement that will come back to the city for the road work. The storm water part of the is included in the project, and that'll be funded aside from this. So this is just the agreement with MAG for reimbursement with federal money for Elliott Road, but there is a significant storm water component to this project.
And is that part? I guess that's my concern, is the timing of that. Is the flood control portion of that going to be in alignment with when we widen out Elliott Road?
Yes, it will be.
Perfect, thank you.
You answered it, thank you.
Okay. I do want to note that both 5A and 5B are agreements with MAG. And so, item 5A specifically, it's actual federal money that's coming back to the city, almost $13 million. Item 5B, which is for the expansion or widening of Ellsworth Road, is Proposition 400 money that will be coming back to the city. And we received about $18 million in reimbursement through that program in the last fiscal year. So, given that we don't know the future of the extension of Proposition 400, I just wanted to note that we do, you know, we get a significant amount of money back through that half set sales tax. All right?
Thank you, RJ. Other questions on the agenda? I do have a couple of simple questions. One is on 4B. I see that we are entering a contract with Happy for the marketing for the Mesa Arts Center. And my question is, is that a renewal? Have we used Happy before? I'm just curious from, or is this a new contract, a new vendor?
Good morning, Vice Mayor, council members. Happy to be here this morning. I'm Cindy Orinstein, Director of Arts and Culture. And it is a renewal and an expansion. We previously had a contract for services for Mesa Arts Center graphic design. And we're now doing two things. We're adding IDEA Museum and the Museum of Natural History to the contract so that they can also get the fantastic benefits of professional graphic design services that have been provided to MAC. And we're expanding the amount for MAC as well because we use their services to such a degree that it was clear that it was, through the RFP process, clear that it needed, that contract needed to be expanded.
Very good, very good. I like the graphics and the arts, the branding that we have at the Mesa Arts Center as far as in the literature and the media presence and such. And so that will retain the same, but it'll be expanding to include the other museums.
Exactly. And we'll also be looking at some potential brand refreshes with the two museums. But we do recognize that Happy's contract with MAC has had a big impact on our marketing success, and we want to extend that success to the two museums.
Wonderful. Thank you for the explanation, Cindy.
Absolutely, thank you.
I had one other question on item 5D. It's for the city manager to enter an MOU, Memo of Understanding. Okay, it's MU, I guess, across the reimbursement with the FBI for the Phoenix area child exploitation and human trafficking. And I'm glad we have this support. One of my concerns is as we embark the Super Bowl in January, the entire valley, sometimes human trafficking is quite an issue. And I didn't know if this funding is going to focus on that? Or is this just for an annual beating up of the program?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, members of the council. It is, yeah, just for the next couple of years, it's allowing the overtime, et cetera, that is going to be associated outside of the city of Mesa personnel costs. So the hours that are above and beyond what our members of our heat unit are going to be working on, any of the supplemental personnel that will be assisting them during that, especially during the Super Bowl, but also as a continuing basis on a per-project basis. But yeah, definitely, they are gearing up for January, February, for sure.
I assume the cities are all doing special task force during that time to identify any human trafficking child exploitation?
Yeah, they've been meeting for a while, and they're very much tied in with a lot of the non-governmental organizations as well. And this just allows that additional funding so that the city of Mesa doesn't have to absorb all the extra costs.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's other questions on our agenda, we'll go on to the next part of our study session, which is here.
Vice Mayor, just, I'm sorry, good morning.
Good morning. And I should have announced, we have Scott Butler instead of Chris Brady.
That is not announce worthy, but thank you anyways, Vice Mayor. I did want to let the council know, we're going to be adding an agenda item this afternoon when you get your updated agenda. Natalie Lewis was going to come forward and explain that to the council so you're not caught off guard when you see it added.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So when you had your housing board meeting last week, we talked to you about an intergovernmental agreement that we want to enter into with the county for additional rent assistance dollars, which will extend our ability to continue our program at least through the end of the year. And so, we've been working with the county and their legal department. We have it finalized today, so we'll be adding that to your agenda for Monday's action.
That's wonderful. Thank you, thank you, Natalie.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor.
I think I should have checked with you before I advanced on to the next part. So now we'll go into the hearing and presentation, discuss the utility enterprise fund forecast, and provide direction on proposed utility rate adjustments. Welcome, gentlemen. Welcome, Brian.
Morning, Vice Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Brian Richel. I'm the Management and Budget Director. Alongside of me is Chris Olby. He is a Budget Coordinator in the Office of Management and Budget. So today, we will be presenting the utility forecast and rate recommendations. So I will go ahead and kick it off, and then each department, utility department, will come up and present their own section. And then myself and Chris will then wrap it up, wrap it up with the forecast itself, and then also the timeline. So just a reminder, the utility operations, the city looks at the utility operations. Each utility is operated as a separate business center, but however, the city does look at the fund on a whole. And doing that, the reserve balance does provide a safety net for any unforeseen conditions, for instance, any increases in capital costs or increases in operating costs, things like that. What it also does too is it helps, the reserve balance helps smooth out the rate adjustments year over year. And in taking into consideration the forecast and the utility rates, the city does take a look at the financial principles. And just a reminder of the financial principles, just some of them I'll point out is, we do, the city does try to balance the net sources and uses of the fund itself, along with the departments. We do try to keep a 20% or higher reserve balance. And also, we look at the equity between residential and non-residential rates. And then also, we look at the affordability of the services. So in keeping those in mind, we will have Water come up and present their section first.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, council. I'm here today, well, as a writer, I'm Chris Hassert, Water Resources Director, and I'm here with Seth Well, Deputy Director. We're going to go over our proposed rate plan with water for water and wastewater. So this is a snapshot at some of our increased costs and pressures on the utility. We're in a pretty unique time right now because not only are we going through inflation that has not been seen in decades, really, we're also going through a very severe drought, and that's also having cost impacts on the utility. You can see power and chemical costs. That's not unusual, but those are pretty significant increases. What's really noteworthy on this slide is the water commodity cost. So that's what we pay for raw water to treat and deliver to customers. I'm going to talk more about that in the upcoming slides, but in terms of the big picture, these are just some numbers, but the total impact this year to the water utility for the water side is $14 million, which is very significant. Some other things that are included are our share of the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant. That's about $1.1 million. Labor's going up and other costs, including debt service. So why don't we go to the next slide? So on the impacts of the drought, this slide tells a lot of different stories. If you look at the left side, that dark line, that shows a somewhat gradual increase in raw water costs over the last five to six years. But you can see from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, there's a very severe inflection. In fact, it's about a $3.7 million jump in our raw water costs. And to put that in perspective, that $3.7 million, that's about the total jump that we've seen over the last seven or eight years. So in just one year, there is a very big jump. And that's, we've been in drought for 22 years, we're going on 23 years, but what's really changed in terms of cost is scarcity. So now that we're in a Tier 2A drought on the Colorado River, there's a lot less water that's available to stakeholders, and that means you're taking fixed costs, like fixed O&amp;M, debt repayment, and you're spreading that out over a lot smaller pool of available water to sell to customers. So that's driving up the unit cost. So that's having a really significant impact. You can see a couple dash lines on the right side. The lower one, the blue one, that's for Tier Zero. So a couple of years ago, through the DCP, we were in Tier Zero. And of course, that introduced some scarcity, and that increased unit costs. But you can see how steep it is under the red dash line, that's Tier 2A. And as the drought, if it deepens, it gets more severe, you're going to see that line stay steep, sort of like the 21, 22 to 22, 23, that black line, it would stay that steep. So that's just, that's giving you at least an insight into what the drought impacts it's having on the water utility. So let's go to the next slide. So, sure.
Can I just back up to that? There's one thing I didn't catch on our Audit and Finance meeting I meant to ask. So on the graph, you have the blue dotted line. Okay, that's your tier. Okay, okay, maybe I'm reading it wrong. All right, never mind. I just caught, I'm misunderstanding. Thank you, please proceed.
Sure, thanks, Vice Mayor. So building off of the drought concept, to make up for that $3.7 million, we model different scenarios, and one proposal we have is a drought commodity charge. So to make up for the steep increase in the unit cost of water, we're proposing an eight cents per thousand gallon drought commodity charge that would be applied to all customers, and that's for over the first 3,000. The first 3,000 are really baked into your basic monthly rate. Our average customers use about 6,000 gallons per month for residential, so they would be, what would apply to them would be eight cents times 4,000 gallons through 6,000, so it would be a total of about 24 cents a month. If you took a customer that used quite a bit more water, say 33,000 gallons, if you take away the first 3,000 gallons, now you're looking at 30,000 gallons times the eight cents, they would pay about 10 times the average customer. They'd pay $2.40 a month. Towards the bottom of the slide, it just illustrates numerically what that graph had shown. So Tier Zero, that blue dash line, we would be paying about $13.4 million for water, but in fact, we're seeing a $3.7 million jump all the way up to what Tier 2A is presenting this with, which is about $15.2 million in water costs. Yes, Vice Mayor? Councilmember Freeman?
Hi, Chris. The drought commodity charge, is this a one-time charge? Are we going to assess this from now and every other, every year hereafter?
It's meant to be for this coming fiscal, or for the next period to cover our increase in commodity. It can be taken away, so the thing about having a separate drought commodity charge is separate and apart from the rates, it's not baked into the rate, so it's less permanent. It can be taken away, but it's meant to stay in place to cover our immediate increase in costs. Seth, would you comment on, in terms of years after next year?
Correct. What Chris said is correct. What we will do is we will monitor the status on the river, what is occurring with the rates, what our charges are. And if we return to a normalcy, if that exists, that rate can be removed. So it is simply intended on the previous graph, if you want to pop back. The blue dotted line, we've had those figures in forecast for many years. And so with the current conditions, what has happened, those upper lines are putting that additional pressure on our rates. So the commodity charge is meant to try to just recapture that difference between those two lines. So if that upper line were ever to return to a normal point, the commodity charge would disappear.
Okay. So, yeah, just, when we came up with this concept, initially, when we were presented this conversation, we were just going to include it in the rate. So then the rate would have been higher than we've talked about in the past. And so the idea was, you know, we don't know how long this will continue. It could be, you know, two years, it could be five years, it could be 10 years, whatever it might be. But if we were to come back out of the drought and get back into, close to that blue line, we wanted the ability for councils now and in the future to be able to evaluate, are we still in this drought premium paying for water? And if we're not, then that would be an easy one to pull off. And I think we're going to try to, also how we describe the rate to our residents is kind of recognizing that water does get more expensive during the drought. But again, if we're able to manage that and bring that back down, then it's transparent there, so it's easier to go back and adjust it off, where if it's embedded in the rate, someone's going to forget about it, we think, you know, we just weren't concerned. And I think it also just highlights the conditions we're in. So that's our philosophy. And we could easily, just, we could translate that and put it into the rate if you wanted us to, but we thought this was a way to kind of highlight the reason for the increase.
Well, my follow-up question is, are other municipalities doing this charge? Are we the first?
No, we just, yeah, we just, well, because this is like the first year it became so obvious to us, so.
Well, I think this is, cleans up what you're doing. I mean, it separates it.
Right.
So I like that.
Yeah.
The other fact is, I think there's three water providers for municipality. You got SRP, CAP, and ourselves, right? So the cost probably for the water is probably driven more on the CAP side, let's be honest. I mean, to deliver that water versus the SRP water. But I like the separation of it, so, and then, as I understand it, this surcharge can be removed at your will, or does it have to come to council and have to be removed from the utility rate?
Jim?
So, we started to talk about that, like, what's the trigger event to remove it? And so we're still working on that, whether or not, you know, and sort of whether it's going to be something that has to come back to council, if it's something if we go back to Tier 1. And so we'll come back and talk to council about, I'll call it, the trigger for it to be removed. We've started that conversation, but we don't have an answer yet.
I'm less hesitant to bring your rate decrease than an increase, so even if it takes council approval, I think we could do that. But yeah, we'll figure that out. But the idea, to the point, is intended to be specific to this premium we're paying. So it's not in, you know, I'm trying to be optimistic, this doesn't go on forever, and so that then we would take, I want to be careful, I don't want to suggest that, oh, it's just next year. But the idea is to highlight the increase, and then if it's not needed, because the, you know, we've recovered or something's, we would bring, we're out of these tiers, right, then we would come back.
I doubt that we will be.
I know, I'm just.
But that's optimistic.
Councilmember Lynn.
This is, we're hoping that this would encourage water conservation, especially if you go over the, it's at 3,000, so we wanted people, you know, based on the conferences that my colleagues and I have been to, it doesn't look like the drought's going to improve next year or the following year. It looks like this is going to be a permanent thing. Would you venture to say that that's what's going to happen?
I wouldn't, Councilmember Lynn, Vice Mayor, I wouldn't say permanent. I mean, there's data going back thousands of years that just show cycles occur. This is a deeper, more severe drought than we've experienced. It's a drought that hasn't been seen in 1,200 years. I would say it could last a while longer. The modeling suggests it'll last longer. So there's discussions that need to be had with the federal government and all of the contract holders on the Colorado River. Right now, we don't, we don't know as much as we'd like, there's a lot of backroom discussions, I think, going on, and in terms of trying to develop a strategy. The municipalities use about a quarter of the water, the total water out of the Colorado River system. Agriculture uses three quarters. So I think the low-hanging fruit is trying to make a deal with agriculture. So to try to stem the tide of, like, me dropping, like, Powell dropping, it's going to take, it's going to take everybody. So conservation from, everybody from the single-family home up to the largest farm is going to be critical. I don't think anyone can escape, or just stand back and say, I'm not going to do my part. I think everybody needs to do their part.
Okay. And the city will then move forward in terms of their conservation efforts?
Yes, we are doing right now, yeah.
We're having great results, too. We set a target for ourselves under the Stage 1. So Stage 1 of the city's drought management plan, there is an internal target to save out of our own water consumption. That's, every department, Parks is probably the biggest, they're ones under the microscope because they have the most turf and use a lot of water. They're doing an excellent job, they're using software technology, they're picking out areas of turf not to overseed. And so far, about a half a year into this Stage 1, they've exceeded double, they're double digits in terms of water savings.
I think our goal is 5%?
5% is the goal.
And we're at?
They were up around 14%.
14%, so we're doing, tracking pretty well.
Councilmember Spilsbury.
I also like this, just so that it does separate it out and makes it really clear what it's for, because everyone understands where we're at with water. But is this, so this will show up every month on their bill, and then how are we going to communicate that to the residents? Like, are we telling everyone we're doing this? It's just a surcharge that'll show up? What are we, what's the plan for that?
It'll be, it'll be part of our overall communication. It'll just be another layer of communication on top of all the communication we're doing already with Stage 1. And there's a press release that went out yesterday, or that's going out soon, to talk about overseeding and what people can do to save water by maybe rethinking overseeding.
I got that email yesterday. Yeah, and it was on the news, yeah.
So, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, so what you're being briefed today, will then come to council to do a notice, right?
Notice of intent.
Notice of intent, and then have 60 days. So we'll have, whatever the council, when we forget that notice part, we'll have 60 days before we come back again for implementation. So that'll give us the opportunity. So it's a matter of communication, but it's also a matter of timing, right? So know when it's going to happen. So we'll have that 60-day period to ramp up and provide that information.
Because obviously, it's not a huge amount probably for most people, but you always wonder what those charges are on your bill or whatever.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And my other question, dang it, I escaped, you talked for too long, Chris. Okay, well, if it comes to me, I'll bring it up, thank you.
And Councilmember Spilsbury, so that is a good point. It's not, we're not inflicting a lot of pain with this drought surcharge, so 24 cents is, it's something, but it's not changing any behavior. And even $2.40 on a large user, it's not designed to change behavior, it's meant to recover our costs, but also get the message of awareness out that we are in this drought and there are impacts, and we're all sharing in that.
I just, I remembered. So as of now, there's still no mandated behavior, like, there's no mandatory conservation efforts. It's just all voluntary still at this point. So, yeah, like you said, this isn't really going to change any of that behavior necessarily, but make it aware, people aware of what's going on.
It's another tool.
Okay.
Correct. And so the, any kind of mandated measures wouldn't happen until deeper into our drought management plan, stages 3, 4.
Because I just constantly have people asking me, like, what's the city doing? How come there's no mandates? The other place, you know, Vegas, whatever, other places are doing all these drastic things, and we're not doing anything drastic yet, so, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Aradia.
I might have missed this, but what's the percentage of cap water we receive for the city?
About 55% is cap water.
And then the other sources?
SRP, in terms of portfolio, SRP and CAP are somewhat equal. Our bigger demand is in the CAP area. So CAP demand is about 55%, SRP is more like 35%, and then the remainder would be groundwater.
And do we expect any increases on the other sources of water in the near future?
We haven't seen much upward pressure on the demand in the SRP service area.
So it's just the CAP that we're, that we're having these increases right now?
Well, the new development is mainly happening in east and southeast Mesa.
But Chris, you would say these other sources of water, not, let's say, we have Colorado, we have SRP, but then we do wells, right? And so that, the cost to drill those wells and deliver, that, that's becoming more expensive. So I don't want to suggest that, you know, it's all the same, but certainly, CAP's seen the most pressure, and I think the greatest concern is the cost and the scarcity that we're concerned about. So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, my question is, Chris, on an interconnect, to allow the cheaper SRP water out into District 5 and 6, are we looking at that, working on that?
Oh, yes, go ahead. Yeah, what?
Well, we, so we already have the infrastructure to move water west to east through our transfer stations, and we do that. In fact, this winter, the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant, which is an SRP plant operated by Phoenix, and we're in that joint venture, they're going to go down for a prolonged maintenance this winter, just to do rehab and repairs at the facility. So we'll be pumping wells, and we'll also be treating water in the CAP area, and then pushing that over to this part of town. And then we could do the opposite. If Brown Road, for instance, because we did this last winter, Brown Road had a shutdown for several weeks, we did move water from west to east. So we're always moving water around the system as needed.
But you, we do have a project, a future capital project to create the interconnect, too.
If, so, that's a different project, and that's to add in more redundancy and reliability, and that's to really move water around more effectively in larger volumes, so these are transmission mains to move water from Signal Butte up to Brown Road and vice versa, and then even diagonally over towards Val Vista through the Falcon Zone. So that's, it's a big transmission main project, and we're in an alignment study on that right now.
The thing would be, it'd be helpful that, you know, with our drought commodity charge, to be able to shift some of that cheaper SRP water during our peak usage times in 5 and 6, so that we're not so heavily reliant upon CAP, and that'll help reduce our costs as well.
I think we're aware of that, we're, yes.
It's a strategy. We're limited to some degree because any water we move off project, it's an accounting, it's a checking account, we have to pay it back with the CAP.
Are we doing that with groundwater, or with replenishment?
Groundwater, we can use anywhere, but SRP on project water, we can move it off project, but then we have to pay that back with CAP water.
Could we, I guess my question is, can we do it with credits? Because we do recharge the aquifer. We can, can we shift those credits back over to SRP in lieu of transferring CAP water?
Councilmember Thompson, I don't believe so, but we'll look into that and verify that for you.
Okay.
I do have one question. So we're at, CAP is declared Tier 2A. Tier 2B is anticipated in the near future, right?
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, the modeling actually shows that we probably will just skip Tier 2B and go right to Tier 3 in 2024.
Okay.
So Tier 2A is declared for, Tier 2A is declared for 2023. We're in Tier 1 right now, but we think we'll probably skip over Tier 2B, that's what the modeling shows.
Okay. And at that time, there will be another rate adjustment?
We would be facing the same kind of upward pressure. It would be the same scarcity induced, less water being sold, more costs that have to be piled onto the, what's left.
So at that point, we would come back to council or whatever, we would need to increase this drought?
That's why we'll come every year, yeah.
Okay. So, but we wouldn't review that until a year from now when we do annual rate review?
Yeah, every year, yes, we'll, yeah, we'll make part of that review.
Okay.
Quickly, Chris, can you explain to, I think this is important for the council to understand, our scarcity is not the water, right? So we have a CAP, it's just the cost of that water. So we have a CAP, it's just the cost of that water. We, we don't even use, we haven't in the past always used our allocation, our legal allocation of water from CAP. So we're getting as much water as we've always had. It's just that that water is just becoming more expensive. Am I saying that correctly?
You are, that's right. So under Tier One this year, 2022, we're faced, we have no cuts to our portfolio. Under Tier Two A, we'll have about 2,600 acre feet. So what that amounts to, it's about four and a half percent of our CAP portfolio. So it's fairly small. And then some of that, using some water law technical language, will be firmed up, meaning CAP will take water from Lake Pleasant. They use Lake Pleasant as a storage reservoir, and they'll be able to give us a portion of that. So we won't even lose the four and a half percent. We'll probably lose 1% of our water. And then to combat that, or to counter that, we have our exchange agreement with the Gila River Indian Community. And this last year, as development has increased, the one benefit of, well, another benefit of that is we get more wastewater to treat, recycle in exchange for CAP water. So we're getting, between this year to next year, we're going to get another 1,500 acre foot added to our portfolio, just because we've sent them more water. So we're almost wiping out and mitigating any effects right now in terms of our portfolio hit.
So it's, so I was cautioning folks, it's not that we have less water. It's just the water we're using is becoming more expensive, which at some point creates a scarcity problem in itself. But just, I, I think to put in perspective, that's what we're dealing with.
Okay, Chris, I think, I think we can move forward from this slide.
No, it was a good conversation.
Just one question. It, it would be nice to have for council, a graph showing the tier cuts, what would affect our city. Like you said, 2,600 acre feet this year. What's Tier Three going to be like, you know, probably next year? You know, if we get there and what cuts there? And how we're going to offset those cuts? Either by groundwater, either by?
I don't think we get to a point where we have less scarcity of water. It's just becoming more and more expensive.
No, we're going to have some cuts, all the municipalities.
Right, but I'm saying we don't use our full allocation.
I get that. But it'd be nice to show a template, what would happen if those cuts were to happen.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. We can do that. So, so you know, I'll tell you today, Tier Three would, would introduce cuts to our CAP portfolio of about 7,000 acre feet versus the 2,600 for Tier Two A in 2023. So if 2024 we do fall into Tier Three, that would be about 7,000 acre feet. Now, again, to mitigate that, we're deep into the design of the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. We're going to start construction. In fact, we'll probably come to you in the fall for a GMP from our contractor to order pipe, because we'll be under construction in, in really months. Once that is done, as soon as we connect the Northwest Plant to that system, we will offset that entire 7,000 acre foot in the, in a flip of a switch.
And that brings up your next slide.
That brings us up the next slide on.
Thank you.
Impacts to debt service. So we're highlighting for you our three biggest projects. I want to jump to the middle one, the East Mesa Water Interconnect, because Councilmember Thompson brought that up earlier. So in our prior estimate, not many months earlier, that project was estimated to be about $82 million in construction. There's a current estimate of about $290 million. So what we're doing with that, we're in the alignment study, so we don't even know the exact alignment. So it's hard to really pin down a construction cost when we don't know what the alignment's going to look like. There, there are things that we think we can put in place to, to actually reduce the amount of pipe we need. So what we've done for the purposes of today and this forecast is we've pushed, we're going to finish the alignment study, but we've pushed the construction outside of our planning window, because there's still a lot more work to do on that. The Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, we're moving full steam ahead on that, but there's been some scope creep. In my, in my opinion, there's been some scope creep that we can look at, things that we've added in that has also been subject to inflation. So that's even aggravated the cost of that scope creep. So there's, there's things we can do to shrink that number. But for this forecast, $183 million is baked into the modeling. And then the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant expansion, that's, basically it's doubled. But again, we're doing value engineering. We're looking at scope that had been added in that we could pull out. We're, we're doing, we're looking at third party estimators to come and help. And we're also looking at scheduling opportunities. And with all those tools, we believe that $201 million can be improved. But again, for the purposes of the financial modeling, the 201 is baked into all, all the forecasting.
Councilmember Thompson?
Is, is that, is the majority of that cost labor or is that supply also? And pipe, I'm guessing, is, the cost is going up and?
Councilmember Thompson, it's, it's everything for the Signal Butte Plant. We're using a tremendous amount of concrete. We're building a new eight million gallon reservoir in addition to all the, the buildings and, and other infrastructure. So concrete was forecasted to be high, it's, it's labor, it's electrical gear, it's, it's everything.
So it's not just normal economic inflation, it's competition with major projects around the valley.
Mostly the big chip plant up in Phoenix.
And Mada, Mada doesn't help either. So they're both, those two, I think, are the big, big ones I hear about all the time.
Councilmember Heredia?
What's a range of, of these projects completion? Or what are, what are we looking? I know some of them, you mentioned, we're in the analysis phase, but what's, what are we looking at as far as completing these?
Councilmember Heredia, for, for schedule?
Yes.
The schedule? The Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline will be done in 20, mid 2025. And the Signal Butte wastewater, or I'm sorry, Water Treatment Plant Expansion will be done probably very late 2025, early 2026. The plan is to get it done ahead of the 2026 summer. It's really about the summers for the water treatment plants.
And what impact do you foresee these, these, you, you've mentioned a little bit as far as how we can move water, but what type of impact would, in your mind, will have, these, these three projects will have on the city Mesa?
Well, the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, it's, it's really, it's a water exchange mechanism. So it's, it's really hooking into the other wastewater plants that recycle water and deliver that water to Gila River community. So it's an exchange mechanism to boost our portfolio, because we get those very valuable, high seniority cap rates. So that's the story behind the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. The Signal Butte expansion is really, it, it's been master planned for quite a while. The existing plan is 24 MGD. This will add another 24 MGD to give us full build out. That'll be the last expansion we need to do. And it's just really based on growth, demand, and, and everything surrounding that.
So cover some of the growth, the, a lot of the growth that's happened, keep on, keeps on occurring? And then the ability for us to maximize the credits that we, we could use for future, future water, right? So?
That, that's exactly right. So the, the additional cap credits, as we gain those year by year, then those will be used either the Signal Butte Plant or the Brown Road Plant. Those are the two plants in the CAP service area.
Councilmember Luna?
Chris, have we bonded for this yet? Or we still need to do that? Or we still need to go to voters to, to favor this?
Chris, why don't I let you answer that?
Yeah, so we're using the pledged obligations mechanism.
So recall, we've changed that approach. So we'll come to council each year in what time, was it, I can't remember?
It's the spring.
Spring.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll present to you the capital program for that year and what we need for debt. So we're, there is debt, but there's not a bond, there's not a vote, there's not an election.
Right.
This is a council decision, so.
When was the last?
I'm using the wrong term.
When was the last time we did that?
Well, we've done, we do it every year now.
Every year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll come back.
Spring?
I think it's in the spring.
Spring with the capital improvement program. We'll talk about the allocation of dollars, the projects and the allocation that we need to go to the capital markets for that year. So you'll see it then.
Yeah, my concern is that these prices continue to increase. And how do we keep up with, you know, with these, with such large projects? And we know they're essential to our city's growth.
Well, and it's not just these projects, it's every project we have out there right now. We're getting hammered now. We're waiting for something to slow down, right? And so sometimes we debate whether we should just slow down and stop. But these are the kind of projects we need from an infrastructure standpoint. So, but we are sometimes using that as a mechanism to see, hope that, I hate to say this, but if the economy were to slow down, that actually helps us in some ways and brings some of these costs down. But we haven't seen that yet.
And I would say, Councilmember Luna, it's, it's no consolation, but we're not in this boat alone. Every city, I spent a long time in AMO yesterday. We had our board meeting and then we had, quarterly, we do a utility meeting. So those who want to stick around and compare notes and talk about challenges we're facing, we're all facing the same challenges. And I'm going to hand it up to Seth in a second, but just to recap, the droughts, so the drought commodity charge, that's a, it's a tool. It's to keep it out of the, the rate base itself. Talking with some other cities, there were more than a couple of cities that are going to their leadership with double digit rate increases. And you're going to see by us taking this, these different approaches and strategies, we're really going to keep, we're proposing to keep our rates very nominal comparatively to some other cities. So the drought surcharge is, is one approach. And now I'm going to hand it to Seth. He's going to talk about some other strategies.
So one of the other proposals is to implement a 10% increase on the usage charge on the interdepartmental rate. We're hopeful that this is year one of a four year plan to bring that rate up more in line with the residential Tier One. We have not made an adjustment to this rate since fiscal year 2013, 2014. So given the reduction that the interdepartment folks are doing on their usage, couple that with this increase, the impact should be a little less than it normally would be. And I would foresee that the interdepartmental folks would continue to make reductions in their usage to help keep their, their overall bills lower.
The general fund just negotiated a really good rate with utilities. Now we're having to make up for it.
It's, it's been a little bit of our strategy to help the general fund through kind of their tougher years. And now the tables have kind of changed a little bit. The general fund's doing very well. And it's helped us out now. So the next slide, this will break out for you, the rest of the proposals. So on, on the residential side, we are proposing a 2.75% in both the service and the usage charge, along with the drought commodity charge. So to our typical customer, which is that 6K usage, the net effect is they will see an increase of $1.31 per month, or an effective increase of 3.3%. To our general, uh, commercial folks, who we've made an effort over the last few years to bring that equity between the classes, we're proposing a 2.75% on the service charge and a 5.5 on the usage charge. So to our typical general commercial user, they'll see approximately a $2.64 per month increase or an effective 4.8%. Then on the commercial landscape, we're proposing 2.75% on the service charge, 6.5 on the usage charge. And with the commodity charge in there, they'll see a net impact of just under $9 per month or an effective increase of 6.4%.
Councilmember Thompson has a question.
Are you able to break down, like a percentage of, how much, what percentage is commercial versus residential versus commercial landscape? Because, you know, for me, you know, with an inflation in place, I would really like to see on the residential side, that 2.75 maybe come down to 2.5 and then make that up on the commercial landscape and the commercial general, whether it's adding another, you know, making the usage charge on commercial 5.55 and, and the usage charge on landscaping to be, you know, 6.70 or something of that nature. Just to, you know, because it seems like, especially with the drought, we want less, we want more people to use less water on landscaping. So why not drive that cost and kind of, that'll be a forced, you know, sort of a conservation, right? And, and then, but not make it up on our, on our residential while we're in a, during this inflation.
We could certainly look at making some of that kind of adjustments. Just remember that a percentage increase in residential is proportionally significantly more impactful than the limited number of commercial landscaping. So to make up the difference, it would be, I don't, I don't know what the ratio would be, but it'd be much, much larger.
That's why I was asking.
And that's why you see what we're doing, that's the kind of what we're doing anyway, right? We're doing this, to that point, right? We are, that's why you see this big difference here. Now, could we tweak it a little bit more? We could, but, you know, even a small decrease in residential is a much larger increase in the other areas. So this is where we came up with that same philosophy, right? We could look at tweaking that a little bit more, but I guess at some point, how, you know, you're going up to 10% or, you know, on the landscaping or not. So that's, we agree with the philosophy. I think we're just, this is the, this is the ratio of that that we came up with.
It's just during the inflation, you know, people shouldn't have to try to choose between, do we put food on the table or pay for our utility?
Right, but you see the $1.31, you know, three for three, considering cost of food and of fuel, a 3% increase, I think if we all thought gas had only gone up 3% or food had gone up 3%, we wouldn't have a problem. So we think from a perspective of what inflation is today, a 3%, a little more than 3% increase in water, still a pretty good deal.
If we could tweak it, I'd love to see that.
Okay, well, we'll just look at the ratio, what that would mean, so.
Councilmember Heredia?
I think my question was the same thing. Like you're saying, 6K ga, 6K gallons, right? As far as the, the?
Typical.
Typical, what, what's that typical? Are we talking about 70% of the accounts are?
It is, I believe the number is actually just under 60%. I think it was 57% was the number. Back when we did the tier adjustments over fiscal year 11, 12, 12, 13, and we built in that fourth tier, we had projected and forecasted that that 6K would kind of land in the high 50% range. And it, and it's happening.
I know in previous, in previous years you have, I didn't see it, but you had those, those tiers. Maybe I missed them, but could you, could you share those tiers as far as how many people fall into those, those tiers?
The residential tiers, yeah. We'll have to go back and we can come back with that.
We have it, yeah.
Just to make, to make a note of how many, how many people it affects, right? So as, as Councilmember Thompson was mentioning, just having a, a number of, how many accounts does it affect, right? As far as what we're making the changes. And I, you know, I understand the more, the, the, the increases or decreases on the counts on the residential probably because of the numbers we have, right?
We feel, I think we can get those to you, Councilheredia. I think what we have felt like over the years, we were trying to move to that, those tier concepts and, and creating those levels of usage within the residential and trying to get them aligned so that that separation makes sense. I think we felt like we're there now. So it's like trying to keep that structure in place and just now moving everybody up the same. I think we've gone to a point where the tier threes, or I think we have threes, that it's significant outdoor usage is what we're looking at, and there's a group in between. I think we feel like we've structurally gotten that separation where we'd like it to, where we, it makes that distinction. So there's a premium, you know, as you go up. And so all we're saying now is we feel like that, and we can get that tier for tiers. But we feel like that, I call it structure, those separation of those tiers is where we want them. That makes a material difference between a 6,000 gallon is probably mostly indoor use. And then as you go up the tiers, you're then, you're more water outside. And we've made that distinction in the rate. And now what we're saying is, let's keep that separation, those tiers as they are, but we just move everybody up together. We feel like we've made that, those adjustments to separate them.
Councilmember Luna?
Just for definition's sake, when we talk about commercial general, commercial landscape, does that include golf courses? Because I get emails from constituents saying, hey, what are we doing about golf courses? We're in a drought contingency plan. What are we doing about that?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Luna, the short answer is yes. Golf courses do fall into that category. There are three golf courses that actually, a separate rate was negotiated. They originally had cap right access, and the CAP made changes to that agreement or, or the agreement expired. And so we had to work with them to provide some direct access as well. So we do have three that they've got a direct access and they have a separate rate. But the majority of the rest, yes.
Okay, I think we can move forward to wastewater.
To wastewater, much simpler, kind of boring. However, it is seeing the same cost pressures. We did see going into this year about a $3.6 million increase in our costs. Some of the heavier hitters will be the power costs to run the plants, the chemicals to treat the wastewater at the plants. And then our shared 91st Avenue plant, it actually went up about $760,000. So we have the same cost pressures on this side of the house. So on the wastewater side, what we've proposed is a 4.25% increase to both the service charge and the usage charge. and the usage charge, which equates to about a $1.01 increase per month to the typical user. And on the commercial side, 4.5% increases in the categories, which results in about a $2.13 per month increase. This proposal matches what was presented the last time that we came forward with rates. We've made no changes to this one at this point. That is what we have. So if you have any other questions?
Councilmember Thompson.
On your, on the power costs, I know that, you know, our plants have to run 24/7/365. So do we have a special rate with SRP on our electric? Or are we like on a time of, time of use plan? Or, I mean, what, what is our electric, what does it look like? You know, because if, if our costs are going up because we have those, you know, the peak, the peak usage and we're paying for that peak time, would we be better off installing solar with, with batteries to kind of smooth that peak out and push that peak later into the, into the evening?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, as far as the rate, we are on what SRP calls the large general commercial, or an E65 is the actual category. So the unit costs are a little bit lower than what others are paying, but we do have, the rates are kind of built on a time of use. There is a peak, they call a shoulder, and an off-peak. They do try to operate the plant the majority in the off-peak hours, but it's pretty much dictated by what the demand on the plant really would be. But both sides of the House, our control center guys do an excellent job on the water side. We refill reservoirs, we move the majority of our water in the off-peak hours. In the middle of the night, that's when we are moving the most water. So we're taking advantage of the lowest rates.
Yeah, I would add to that, Councilmember Thompson, that's where our utility control center comes in. Those guys really have that dialed in in terms of the rates. And so they work with the plants, they look at what our demand is going to be, even with weather conditions over the next few days, week. And then they really dial in the middle of the night, that's our lowest cost power. They, they crank as much water as they can through the plant, they fill those reservoirs, and then they get it ready to go out in the system when power is at its cheapest. And they do the same with wells, in terms of when they run wells. They do a great job at really dialing in our operations with the lowest power costs.
Okay, thank you.
And didn't we just, a few months ago, get some kind of rebate from SRP at the water, the water treatment plant, Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant?
Well...
No?
That was for our variable frequency drives, in large part. It was over 300,000, I think it was the largest, or the first time that utilities maxed out the rebates in a calendar year.
Yeah, and we were at Greenfield though, too. We hadn't know where we were, we were at Greenfield.
Correct.
No.
Correct.
Yeah, I thought.
And the southeast is all a blur to me. And I stay in downtown, and I leave, I'm lost.
I do have a question. I think that was an energy savings rebate, wasn't it?
It was.
Correct.
Okay. So in our final ask, I'd ask staff to run a scenario about possible decrease on the wastewater charge. I know in my district, I get a lot of emails about wastewater charges. So I asked for, you know, a 3.25%, 2.25% scenario. And I'd like council to consider perhaps a 1%, 3.25% to, for, we have to open this up for a 60-day period for analysis by the public. And so it would give council a little bit of time to analyze that and have a vote on whether the 4.25, as staff recommends, or a 3.25% decrease. So I know it's a $300,000 hit to your budget, but that's one of the things that I know my constituents, they seem to dive into that wastewater charge, and I don't know why it is. But just something to consider and how that could be done. And maybe when Brian and his team come back up, or Chris, you could answer that question.
Yeah, we have slides later on.
Oh, you do? Okay, that'd be on the tail end of each.
So we can, we can, what we would recommend to council is approve this notice going forward. And then if we want to make the adjustment later, we can. The consequence is like anything, right? If you reduce it now, you have to make up for it later. And what we were trying to do is not let, in the five-year forecast, we're trying to keep all those rates under 5%. By adjusting this this year, we have to make it up in the next years, and then we'll be at 5%. So it's kind of like trying to avoid that scenario. But we can bring all that to council and show what it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spill's very...
And in the 60-day waiting period, we can, we can go lower on the rate, but we can't go higher, right? So it would be better to approve it at a higher rate.
Yeah, all you're now giving notice, these are rates you're contemplating approving. And then when we come back in the 60-day to make the actual approval, then we can, we can only adjust down from there.
Okay, so if we want to like look at lower rates on these two things that they're talking about, or...
We would have to do it, we can go lower, we just can't go higher.
But would it start the 60 days over again? No. So we can lower it, we just can't raise it in the 60 days.
Correct. We get Brian up here.
Vice Mayor, Council, that's correct. The other aspect of this too is, and I bet that's why Brian came up, is, is while on these slides, it's, you know, it's one percentage, in the rate book, it's many pages, and there's a lot of work to it. So you couldn't do it sort of the council meeting right before, we can't do it the study session right before the council meeting, because whereas we introduce, we, it's an ordinance, there's a lot of rate books. So we need some forewarning, so in order to be able to get all the documents in so that we can introduce the ordinance with the resolution also that has all the rate books.
So we could come back in 30 days.
And so you would come to council, like at a meeting like this, and suggest what the, those lowering of the rates would do and the impact they would have in actual numbers and stuff?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Council, so the notice of intent that is on the agenda, consent agenda for Monday, that sets the kind of the maximum percentages for the, for the next 60 days. So if council would like to go higher, we would have to adjust that today to get it into the agenda for tomorrow, for Monday. But when that sets, if council does approve the notice of intent, we can definitely go lower. We just can't go higher without having to come back to council and do another 60-day notice and intent. So that's, so that's where that sets. And then as the city attorney mentioned, that yes, it does, it takes a lot to update that rate book. So depending on how the timing of, when we come back to council and what council's direction is, we would need time to update that rate book. However, we do in the schedule, as we'll show at the very end, we, we could come back in late October, early November as kind of an update, and that's when we could come back and kind of show some of those revisions.
So, but the suggestion of Councilmember Thompson of possibly lowering residential, increasing commercial, we couldn't do that because that would increase the commercial rate, correct?
We would have to make an assumption before Monday of how much more that would have to go up.
Because I don't, we're not going to be able to see those numbers before Monday or anything.
Or what, Mayor and Council, we could do, we have done this before by, Brian and we're talking about it just a couple of days ago, is that we adopt all the other rates. If there's one that we need to go back with another notice, we go back and do the notice on it, and then we adopt that rate a little bit later. But all the other rates get approved, and so we sort of, sort of strip that one rate out. And so its start date is a few months later.
So they all are restarted.
Right, so we don't hold up the whole...
My caution about doing that, anytime you delay the rate increase, then you're also delaying the implementation and the impact on the estimation of its revenue. So we can do it, but it's like, well, if you delay implementing the rate, then you're not getting, we're not getting the full effect of the revenue. So my preference is to, when you're going to implement, try to get the full, you know, because we already estimate a full year's worth of implementation, right? So that's how we calculate it. So now, a commercial landscaping, you know, delaying that in the middle of, they're approvals are in, or January, first of the year, whatever, January. So that won't have much of an effect. But if it were like a residential rate, and we're delaying it, again, we also look at this as a five-year window. We don't look at it just for one year. Because if you fix one year, it puts lots of pressure on the out years. So that's why we're going to show you, we, when we came to council, every year we've come to council, we try to show you a smooth rate going on out, a predictable rate. We can make adjustments, but then I have, we have to go out and adjust those, those out of years. And when you delay or you reduce the rate, again, those, those costs just keep coming, especially debt service, water commodity costs. So philosophically, we're trying to keep those level. And, and on the water wastewater side, or wastewater side, we're trying to keep it below 5%. So what we'll show you is if you pull it, pull it back a little bit, it does put pressure in the out year. So a future council next year, the following year, is going to be having rate recommendations that are going to be, you know, higher than what we have today.
And having deja vu, and I think it's because we had this exact same conversation a year ago. We'll probably do it again next fall, too, huh? But I get, I get it, because it's hard. It's like, we want to help right now because we feel the pressure of it right now, but we have to look at those five years.
Well, and you saw those capital costs, right? And the expense of those, right? And we've assumed some of that in here, but they don't go away, right? They don't, we can't adjust those, we need to. So that is, that's why we always try to show you a five-year window, so you don't just think about it in a one-year fix. We have to think about it as, whatever we're adjusting, it's, what does it look like for at least a five-year period?
And Matt, you have that in the chart.
Yeah, you'll, I think we have it later.
Yeah.
Just a quick comment. I'm afraid if we start softening our rates now, just with the pressures on capital costs and commodity costs, we have a lot of pressure, we know, or expecting in the coming years that we will have more abrupt rate increases. We just want to keep it more predictable in everybody's budget and everything. I'm afraid we're going to have, be pressured to have larger percentage of increases than we have projected. Thank you.
Councilmember Luna.
Since I've been here on council the longest, I've seen how this trend goes. We don't want to get in a position like some of our other communities to, to the West, where you impose huge increases to water and sewer, which to me was probably not a wise thing to do. But if you do it incrementally, I think that has been the best approach, and that has served our city well. So we really need to think about, about these, this issue, because it's really important. Because I would hate to give future councils the, the charge of increasing our water rates. That would be significant, and would really impact our communities. So from, from somebody who's been here for a long time, I think this is something you need to consider.
Councilmember Thompson.
Well, I think, and I think to the point too, you know, we've had many, many years, as long as you and I have been on council, we've had really, you know, great years. And all of a sudden, we got hit with COVID, and people lost their jobs. So as a council, we kind of reduced our rates a little bit to help those folks out. And then we came out of that finally, and our general fund did pretty well during COVID. And then all of a sudden, now we get hit with inflation. I mean, it's like back-to-back whammies, and I don't know what else we can do to help our residents out. I mean, again, we, they shouldn't have to choose between putting food on their table or paying their utility bill. And I just don't want to make it worse for people that are, that are already on that edge. And that's, that's my biggest fear, my biggest concern, is how do we help those people that are struggling with these inflationary costs?
No, it's a great point. And I think that's why you see us trying to really keep these percentages down in the, in the time of significant inflation. Again, I don't think these rate, I mean, they're, I get it, the rate increases, they're not convenient, but in relative to us being able to manage inflation and costs, I think we're, relative to everything, cost of inflation, everything else, it's, I think it's a pretty good deal right now that, you know, it's keeping it below 5%. Or in some cases, 3% on the water side. So we're, we're right at 3%. So we're trying to manage all of that, because we're, again, we're absorbing a lot of the inflationary costs. We're, we're still right now drawing down on the fund balance, and we'll show you that later, right? These rates do not cut, we're not in balance, we're not at net zero. We are still spending much more than we are bringing in on revenues, but we can do that because we have a healthy reserve. So we're purposely kind of slowly, gradually bringing that down. But it's a planned process over a period of time.
Are we moving forward?
Would you like to go to the, energy? Go to energy?
Let me.
Okay.
Okay, I've got to circle back here. On the commercial landscape on the water, 6.4% increase. To some of Councilmember Thompson's point, why, in order for them, I guess I don't know the users of commercial landscape. Who are the major users for commercial landscape water?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. Actually, several years ago, when new development came in, the development services folks pretty much drove commercial users. They have a domestic meter and a landscape meter. So the majority of your commercial users will be in that commercial landscape rate.
So they could be residential users as well as...
Well, on the residential side, we have less than 100 dedicated landscape meters, whereas on the commercial side, it numbers in the several thousand.
So I'm just thinking to invite people to use less water on the commercial side, would we raise, consider raising our rate a little bit higher in that area?
We, we certainly, we certainly can, yes, and we...
And that, that drives people to be more, more conservative with their water. I mean, and I don't know who that user is, but I'm saying, obviously, they have monies to pay for commercial landscaping. I don't want to sound ridiculous here, but to me, that's where I would raise some of my, my rates, because that might be a luxury, the commercial landscape. And it might involve the city as well. Do we have commercial landscape meters?
The, actually, the city rate falls under that interdepartmental side. But yes, we do have landscape meters on that side.
Seth, when I look at the numbers on Slide 11, and those amounts you've picked, are those based, how do you get, those dollar amounts are based on what kind of usage?
They are based on the typical. So again, the residential's going to be 6K gals. The commercial, or the general commercial is based on 9K gals. And when you move into the commercial landscape, that's 30K gals.
Yeah.
So they are significant users.
They are, and they're, but they're already paying, they are paying a premium. I don't like council to think we're not, we agree. I guess the question is, and we can, we can look at increasing that more. But I want to suggest, I believe it's correct, I mean, as far as cost of water per gallon, that we've already, we've established those as premiums throughout, right now. So, and not to say we couldn't do it more, I just want to be clear, there already is, we've made that distinction in here.
Well, you can't, as a council, we can't increase it. I mean, we have to set it.
Right, if you're asking us to establish it at a higher rate for the notice, we could certainly do that, if that's the question.
That's, that's, that's what I'd like to...
Okay, so...
Is that okay with the water department?
If that's the direction, if you want us to look at those numbers, certainly.
So let us, let us come up with a number...
Like maybe around $10 a month, right? Like, what would it be if it was a dollar more? I don't know what kind of percentage...
That's a, see, we just need the direction. So let's do, let's do that. We'll just back into that percentage.
Round it up to $10 more.
Yeah, we'll back into it. That's what we need. We're just trying to, okay.
Is that okay?
So can we just review that on Monday?
Monday, we will modify the, and we'll just bring that to you on Monday.
We'll review it on Monday, make the decision before we take the vote to...
Yeah, you'll see that, we'll, we'll make sure it's in the package tonight. You'll just see that we've increased whatever that, I don't know what a dollar more means as far as the service charge and the usage charge. We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay. Can I ask a small, it's a small part of our water, but for irrigation customers, I'm on, how does that play in? Where does that fit in to our rates? Because I know, like on my bill, I have my water usage, and then I have a separate line item for my irrigation. Where does that fit in for irrigation customers?
Vice Mayor, that is a separate rate. It is, the service territory is one square mile.
One square mile?
It's very, very small. So they're, they're not a large portion of our customers.
I didn't realize it was really that small.
It is.
Very elite area.
240 customers.
The majority of the other users, you will see a lot of irrigation around that service territory, but that is direct through SRP. So our actual service is a very small portion.
It's just where we're turning it on and off.
Right.
Whereas the other ones, somebody else like has to go out and do that.
Okay, I didn't realize the service area was so small.
Very small.
Maces, service area, okay. Are we ready to move on to, isn't it, energy?
Energy.
Yeah. Electric.
No, can we do this without Frank? Is that possible?
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Mr. Boucher and John, oh, let's see, let's see how Mr. Boucher speaks electrics.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Scott Boucher. I am the interim energy resources director, and I'm joined today by John Petroff, who is our senior fiscal analyst.[1773.44] And we're going to be presenting our proposed rate increases. So just a quick overview, similar to what you heard with water resources, energy resources is seeing upward rate pressure due to market cost increases. And really, the, a big driver on this is the, is the commodities that we purchase, so both natural gas and electricity. And so we are seeing increases with that. We have been able to balance some of that out with ARPA funds that were made available to the department to be able to use for our, our customers. And also, we have other customer programs such as our Summer Energy Assistance Program that can help out with low-income residents that live in our electric utility area. Always, we're pursuing rate competitiveness with our surrounding utilities, whether that's SRP or Southwest Gas. And we are in the process through the AMI project, the metering project, smart meters, of transitioning to a more modern rate structure that encourages peak resources to be conserved. So when you get into those peak hours, time of use type rates that we're moving towards, but that's going to be dependent upon the meters as they get installed, but really moving towards a modern rate structure. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John, who can chat a little bit about some of the pressures that we're seeing on the electric utility.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. So we are, like water, seeing increased costs and pressures on the electric utility due to inflation on commodities, personal services, contracts. And then we, we have those merit adjustment salary increases that are causing increasing costs on our operating, operating expenditures. And on the debt service side, we have demand in downtown for growth. So we're seeing those capital costs increase. We have multi-department projects. An example is the Broadway Road project that will be underway shortly. And we're also working on reliability and generation projects. On the generation side, we have some solar projects, some microgrids, and we're working on a large-scale generation project, which should all help offset those increasing commodity costs. So that will help our customers. And for reliability, we're, we're, we have a 69KV looping project in the downtown area. And as stated, we, we're, the AMI projects coming onboard. The next slide.
Sorry.
On the debt service, meeting growth demand in downtown, what exactly does that mean? Because if we're, if somebody's coming online, are they paying for the, the capital outlay to increase the, the lines or the service entry? Or is all that, are we funding all that?
So.
Is development paying for itself, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, and so my understanding is, and forgive me a little bit, I'm two weeks into the position, but as I've been.
No excuse, Scott.
As I've been dealing with this, what we look is there's revenue guarantees that we're getting from these projects. So as a project's coming online and the utility, whether it's natural gas or the electric utility, as they're installing the infrastructure that's necessary for those developments, we're looking at what is the revenue that's going to be generated over a period of time and making sure that we're getting that revenue, those revenue guarantees coming back.
So it'll pay for it. It'll pay for itself.
Yeah, so it does pay for itself.
So what is the debt service to meet growing demands in downtown?
So that's, so we, so Fred, we have to put up the front.
So we're putting, but we're getting.
But we're getting the revenue from that new development because a lot of the new development downtown and, and we're excited about is much more dense, right, than the original infrastructure that was, that's out there. So when we have to upgrade or provide more capacity, we're having to put up that capital on the front end. And what we just have to get is that guarantee from the developer to make sure we get the revenues to pay it back.
Okay, so this is just a graphical representation of those increasing debt service costs. The dotted line is the prior forecast and the solid line is the current forecast. It is lower. We have some, we're not issuing as much debt in the future years, but you still see those increasing costs over time. And then this is the operating cost example, same graph, but the dotted line is the prior forecast and the solid line is the current forecast of those increasing costs over time. Moving on to residential electric bill comparison, so this is a monthly bill comparison for three classes of customer usage. You have a small usage, average and a large. We're not recommending rate adjustments for this period for the residential electric comparison. As you can see, the blue is our current rate compared to SRP and the yellow. And the shaded area on top is if we didn't get that ARPA offset, what the bill would be. So without that ARPA offset, we would be quite a bit above SRP on average. Right now, with the ARPA offset, we're about 5.8% above SRP. So for that reason, we're not recommending rate adjustments until those commodity costs can, we can see those coming down.
Real quick, and I guess I'll bring up my same question that I brought up last time. You know, without, at, at some point in time, that ARPA offset's going to go away. And when it does, and when we're $3 to $4 more per kilowatt hour, what have you, well, not per kilowatt hour, right? But when, when our funds or when our costs are higher than SRP, at what point do we start looking at it and say, okay, maybe it's better to sell this piece of electricity to SRP and let them spread that peanut butter across their rate structure versus us continuing to fund at a higher rate? Because I mean, you know, money's not free, so we're robbing Peter to pay Paul to keep our rates artificially low on the electric side. And right now, we're using ARPA funds, but after ARPA runs out, what are we going to use?
Well, and so we were not able to control those spiking commodity costs like SRP could, they could absorb over a larger system. So that's why we're able to use, that's how we're using the ARPA funds is to take care of that spike. What we're hoping is, but we're doing a better job and I think you'll see some things where we're lessons learned, right? We're coming up with these microgrid systems and other things so we can avoid those kinds of higher premiums on the commodity costs. So what I think we're hoping is that as we, the $20 million is set aside, I think, do we have nine more months, a year left? What do we think it's going to be?
About a year.
A year left. So we're hoping some of these projects that we're bringing on will help to mitigate against those kind of costs in the future. But yes, that's something we have to always consider. I don't know how interested SRP would be in taking on our system, but we, we recognize we're trying to keep that parity and that's why we're saying, you know, now their rate, they're starting to see increases in costs, too. We're going to hold ours firm and steady where we are today. So we, because obviously, we can't justify going any higher than we are.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Heredia.
I guess that was my point, you know, investing into some of these generation projects. What's, what's the outlook as far as us being able to keep these rates stable? Like the microgrids, the solars?
I think it allows us to be the master of our own destiny more so, as opposed to being reliant on an open market that may be affected by what's happening in Texas or California. So I think that's one of the reasons we, it, there's an appeal to us is to have those resources available to us under our own control.
And as far as the, the ARPA funds, what's the timeline of these projects, I guess, that will correspond?
I don't think we haven't done in a year, but we're, it's giving us a year to move forward. I don't know. John, Scott, I don't know if we have specific timing on some of these projects, but I know they're underway in design, but we can get back to you on those projects.
Sure.
This generator starts in 2324, the large-scale generator.
It's kind of close.
Close.
Yeah.
And the micro, the microgrid's 2324.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to get there as fast as we can. Okay, John?
Okay. Moving on, so the similar story on the commercial side. We're not recommending rate adjustments for commercial electric. Now, this, this comparison is without demand charges, so it's quite a bit skewed a little bit higher than if you would put demand charges in, the comparison gets pretty close. But due to the market with the commodity costs, we're still not recommending rate adjustments for our commercial customers either.
And then one of the new rates that we are proposing is electric vehicle discount rate. This will be dependent upon meter availability and the smart meters being installed. But really, this provides an incentive for folks to charge their electric vehicles in the electric service area in off-peak or super-off-peak times. And really, by providing that sentence, it's also a disincentive for them to be doing that during the peak times when we're having the most expensive energy. So there will be some requirements of the customer must have a qualified vehicle and must provide us information about that. And we're working with staff to be able to implement this with CIS also. But really, the, the thing that we need first is those meters to be able to measure that time of use. So, but this is a rate that we're proposing so that this rate is in place and we're prepared for that as it starts to roll out with those meters.
I know, like with SRP, you have where you, you have it on the on-peak hours and you can see the, the savings that you have. So I'm assuming these digital meters will have that capability of telling residents, look, this is, this is the savings that you're getting if you're, you're doing these off-peak charging pieces, right? So.
Yes, that, that is the purpose of the, the project for the electric utility is to be able to move to, as we discussed right in the beginning, a modern rate structure. The rate structure that the electric utility has now really is the more energy that you use, the less that you're paying. So, and that's not how we purchase our commodities. So we're trying to match up the rate structure for the residential or for the, for the customers with the way that we purchase that power also.
Do we envision having these types of rate discounts for conservation purposes on, on energy in the future with the digital meters that, so that folks can apply, you know, charging or usage in the future?
Moving forward, you will see that the electric utility will move towards those more time-of-use rates and, and being able to, to, like I said, go with a more modern rate structure that you see from the other utilities that are in the area.
Again, what's, I know we talked about in the past, but what's the timeline again on those digital meters, especially in this, the coverage of electric, the, the electric area, so.
So the first phase is rolling out here as we speak. The communications are being deployed. And we have 200 meters that we received. So those are actually going to our solar customers first because they're the customers we're most interested in understanding how their use patterns and, and generation works. So that's being rolled out right now and that's called Phase One of the AMI project. And then Phase Two will begin. Shortly thereafter, in the spring, whenever we receive meters. Meters are the real holdup right now. Apologize for crashing in late. Being a new father is interesting for me. I don't know how many times I can play that card, but truly my apologies.
You're fine.
We all understand.
Okay, moving on to gas. So like water and I said for electric, we're seeing on the operating side inflation.
I have a question. Is the fund balance for, for this, for electric, are we positive? Are we, we're running in the black on this? And, and how, maybe later, how much money is transferred over the general fund out of this? But I guess one of my questions is, Chris, is eventually, you know, we're, we're covering this gap with the ARPA funds. And in the future, you know, two years from now, when that funding runs out?
So again, that's, that's the idea is that we're hoping that what drove that up, the differential was those commodity costs, right? That we were, we just weren't in the same kind of. Market, right. So we're, while we're bringing on these microgrid systems so that we, that will help.
Tony, you can explain a better idea. So I think one thing we want to make the distinction of is that our rates are broken into kind of two buckets. So the first is the distribution costs, which is what we're talking today. And then the ARPA funds have been applied to that commodity pass-through or the E-CAP is what we historically refer to it as. So that is purely the cost to generate electricity and get it to Mesa. And so with the projects that Chris, Mr. Brady mentioned, those will offset those market purchases because every electron that we generate here in Mesa is something that we don't have to buy on the market.
Correct.
So we're, we're looking at a few different buckets for that. And that would be, so microgrid-type generation, so using natural gas and very clean, efficient, new, natural gas generators to generate our own electricity. We're installing solar downtown, so we have 800 KW between ASU, the ice rink, MCP and 55 North. And we're putting together an RFP for an additional two megawatts there. And then we're also looking to bring online utility-scale solar that's not in Mesa. And so that's going to be a middle-of-desert-type project, but much bigger, much better economies of scale. And that's probably going to be our lowest cost, if not close to our lowest cost resource. So we're looking to move away from, right now, we're a 20% hydro, 80% market split. We've got to get that market split down significantly. And we're doing that by generating our own electricity and looking to do that incrementally. And so by doing that, we're reducing our market purchases, our exposure to the high market, which we believe is high temporarily. It has come down. 2020, 2021 was the worst. This summer was a little bit better, we think. So, and then in conjunction, SRP is raising their rates. So they're not isolated from the same things that we're exposed to. So as we look to come down, we're hoping, well, I don't think we're hoping they come up, but as they, they kind of match what we're seeing, we're going to see those rates come a lot closer, we think.
And we, we have the, yeah, the net sourcing uses throughout the forecast period, it kind of bounced between negative 1.5 and negative 2.5 million per year. It's not getting worse over time, so it's kind of stable with, even with the debt, debt service increase due to the growth. Again, kind of paying, the growth paying, paying for that, it is fairly stable throughout the forecast.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Going back to Councilmember Freeman's question on the, on the general fund transfer. Chris, how much, what, what utilities are we transferring funds from to the general fund?
All of them. Remember, there's an ordinance that the council approved.
Right, right.
And someone's going to ask me to sort of say it. I don't remember all the percentages. There's different buckets, right? So.
I guess what, because what I'm looking for is maybe a comparison to your ARPA offset with that general fund transfer. You know, so, so like, if you look at your residential electric bill comparison, where you have your chart and you have the hashtag, or not hashtag, the hash apart that says Mesa Current without ARPA offset. And with the offset, what would it look like if you didn't have that general fund transfer?
We could look at it, but again, that's why we did it by ordinance. So we, it takes an ordinance to undo it. And so we, I, we could look at it, but then where do you make up?
Right.
The difference?
I was.
Do you shift it to what other utility?
Yeah, I mean, I was just wondering with the, you know, during our good times, do we have the ability to reduce that transfer?
So that is frowned upon significantly by rating agencies. They, and that's one of the reasons we moved to the ordinance so that we could have a strong statement of, we wouldn't be, in the past, the city was always accused of going both ways, you know? When the general fund was down, it would move more money out of the utilities. And then the rating agencies were upset because like, well, this utility, you're, you're taking money out of the utility. So we did that for years going back and forth. We finally, we kind of came back based on all that criticism. And, and you know, I think even the community is trying to figure out, okay, what's the, what's the policy here? And that's why we came up with that ordinance. And we've said that this will be what we will do going forward and we will just build that into the system. So we've tried not to, and we've, so we've created the, even the ability to make those adjustments significantly higher or complex in the meaning it's an ordinance now, it's not just a budgetary decision, it's, it's more than that. So. Do you have anything else?
I was just going to also say that the transfer, the majority of the transfer is for public safety. And so I don't have the exact, I could pull the percentages, but remember that, that is what.
25%. 25%, yeah.
Well, yeah, it was 25% of the. Right. Most people don't think of it that way. Most people think of it, so don't, don't think of 25 and 5 and then they'll say that doesn't add up to 100, right? So I know, I know what you're saying, but if you were to look at the total transfer as a percentage of it, the vast majority is for public safety.
Yes.
Because I think that's how most people think of it. We're thinking of what's written in the ordinance.
But we're thinking about it in terms of how it affects these enterprises, it's 25 and 5. So that's, that's why we talk about it that way. It's not as a, the whole transfer, I don't know what that total amount is, but most of it goes into public safety.
For, yeah, for 2223, we're projecting 120 million total. Yeah, for 22, 23, we're projecting 120 million total and 100 of that is for public safety.
Gas.
Yeah, and gas, I think that's where we are. I kind of get lost.
We're running out of gas.
So as I said, like electric and water, we're seeing inflationary pressures on our operating costs and we also have some personal service increases that are, that are driving costs up on the operating side for gas. On the debt service side, we are trying to meet that growth in the magma service territory. We have a new gate station, a new 12-inch high-pressure gas line on Gansel Road and a replacement project on Meridian Road of a 12-inch gas line. And then we have some quarter-section projects with other departments and of course the AMI project we've talked about. Moving on, this is similar to electric, the graphical representation of those increased cost pressures. The solid line is the current forecast and the dotted is prior. And then on the operating side, again, the gap's not as big, but you're still seeing increasing operating costs for the gas utility. Okay, and now this is our residential gas bill comparison with SRP. So in the blue is.
Southwest gas.
Sorry, Southwest gas. So in the blue, you see the current rates, the green is our proposed rate comparison, and the yellow is the Southwest gas estimated rates. So on average, our proposed gas bill, if we, if you approve the increases, will be about 0.2% or seven cents below Southwest gas on average. And then, so these are our proposed rates. We are proposing a 75 cent increase to the system service charge for summer and winter and a 10% tier-two winter/summer increase for the usage charge. And that's also to get that, move to that more moderate rate structure on the gas side where the more gas you use, you're not, you're not getting that benefit of excess usage to help with our capacity and gas purchases. So overall, the average, average usage customer will see a 2.2% or 95 cent a month increase on their bill. And on the commercial side, this is the comparison with Southwest gas. The blue is current, the green is proposed, and the yellow is Southwest gas. So our proposed rate for an average commercial customer would be about 0.7 or $3.80 more than Southwest gas if the proposal's approved. So what we are proposing is a $2 service charge increase on the commercial side with a 1% tier-one winter and summer usage charge increase and a 3% tier-two winter and summer usage increase. So that effective increase will be 0.8% on the average commercial customer or $4.59 a month.
And so some other changes to the rate book is that we've been going through and trying to eliminate rates that aren't used to try and simplify our rate book for our customers. One of those changes is the removal of the electric direct access rates. Those were put in place in the late 1990s when it was contemplated that Arizona would move to what's called an electric deregulated market where each customer could pick their own provider and Mesa would just serve as a conduit to get that electricity to the customer. I believe the Supreme Court, Arizona Supreme Court stepped in and told them they couldn't do that. So the statute's been on the books the whole time until last year. And so now that that statute's been removed, we feel it's time to remove those provisions from our rate book because nobody's ever been on it, we never used it, it's just been in there as just kind of an in case. Things move forward with that. The other rates that we're looking to remove are natural gas rates. So we have a natural gas lamp rate, a natural gas air conditioning rate, a natural gas seasonal service rate, and a natural gas irrigation pumping service rate. We've never had customers on these rates in 16 years I've been with the city. We have had a few erroneously on the, on these rates. And I think I told that story in the Audit and Finance Council session, but suffice to say, with all these rates in our rate book, it can make it very confusing for our customer service folks who have to set up new customers. And customers often get accidentally put on these rates. So we want to eliminate them from the rate book in order to make things simpler for our customers.
Okay. Good on gas? All right. So Sherry's gonna, this is Sherry's debut, her big moment. No pressure.
She's like a seasoned pro.
She is.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Sherry Collins and I'm the interim solid waste director. With me I have Justin Stat, who's our senior fiscal analyst. So I'm going to get started today by something that's not on our presentation, just give you a quick update. I'm sure you're all very curious on recycling. So we currently have a contract for 12,000 tons of our recycling material. So we are recycling 12,000 tons. We currently have an RFP out with the town of Gilbert. We have received those responses back and we are evaluating those. We will come back to you in December with our recommendation on those, that RFP. And with that, we will have a home for the tonnage that we collect in Mesa for all of the tons, not just 12,000 tons. In addition to that, we've talked recently about regional partnerships on transfer stations and a MRF. We continue those conversations and we will again come back to you in the future with an update on those conversations we're having.
And specifically, Sherry, again, we're having those conversations with the town of Gilbert. So we're working with them on all of this together.
Correct. Okay, so with that, I'll get into our rate recommendations. So as you've seen today, we also have increasing cost pressures on our utilities. Some of the major categories we have are personal services. Just to keep in mind, the last time we came to during our budget cycle, that wasn't, that does include approval for nine additional positions that we needed for the growth. Our disposal fees are increasing as well by the CPI index and a little over 6.2%. We also see cost-increasing pressures in our barrel and bin purchases, and that's strictly based on the material that's used to, to actually manufacture those containers. And lastly, we see a cost-increase pressure on our CNG. It's not necessarily the usage, we're almost fully converted, it's the commodity cost on that. We do continue to look at that and there are still significant savings with that CNG conversion. So this is just a chart that depicts those cost pressures that I talked about on the previous slide. The solid line is what we're currently forecasting and the dotted line is our original forecast. So next, I'd like to talk about the rate recommendation for the solid waste residential rate. So the average, the average residential customer has a 90-gallon trash barrel. And so we're recommending a 2% rate increase. When we came to you last time with our forecast, we recommended a 2%, and so we were able to hold it at that 2%. Another line item that we're recommending an increase to is the green and clean fee. That is a fee that covers two programs, our household hazardous materials facility as well as our neighborhood cleanup program. We're recommending five cents of that, seven cents to go to the neighborhood cleanup program, and then two cents to go to the household hazardous materials facility. So the total increase on the bill would be 67 cents. For comparison, we have other cities up there and their rates to show you how we compare to them. The next item that I'd like to talk about are our pay-as-you-throw programs. We have two pay-as-you-throw programs. We have a bulk item program. And to help with some of those cost pressures, we're recommending a $1 increase to that. It's a per-load fee. And then the next, we're recommending an increase to the homeowner landfill program. This program is a self-hauling program for the residents where they can go to the landfill for a, it's a very, it's a reduced rate. We're just recommending to increase that from $13 to $15, and that's just in line with what those CPI increases are that we're seeing. And the next item that I'd like to talk about is our commercial business. So our commercial business, I just want to remind you, is that we're open for competition. So we do compete with the private sector on this line of business. And overall, we're recommending a 4.5% rate increase, and we get there in a variety of ways. We don't want to put too much cost pressure on one type of customer, so we work on this in multiple ways. So the first recommendation we have is to increase the base rate for their containers by 2.5%. Again, just showing that the majority of our customers are six-yard customers, and so that rate increase is just a little under $3 for them. We're also recommending to increase the fee for collection of those bins out of our normal, normal zone for that day. It does add extra miles to us for the day, so we're recommending a $1 increase on those out-of-zone collections. Then we also offer discounts if you have multiple-day service or multiple-bin service. And we're just recommending to decrease that discount slightly. Currently, we give them a 16% discount. We're just recommending to decrease that to a 15% discount. And then also in our front, commercial front-load program, we install casters for customers. And so we're, we're recommending to increase this installation fee from the current rate of 3414 to 7644. We analyzed that this year and the cost of casters and one year of staff time is what we, we charge for this. And in order to recoup the cost for that, it is, we're recommending to increase it to that 7644. Just to keep in mind, these are our brand-new customers, so the customers that we bring on, it's just a startup fee for them, a startup cost for them. Last year, we only charged it 25 times. And there's multiple reasons why we would have this. A lot of the, a lot of the places that were built in the 50s and 60s in Mesa have different standards than they do today. So in order to safely service those containers, we need to put on casters and be able to roll them out. Also, sometimes customers will request them. They want to keep the container for themselves under lock and key or maybe in their bay to have it really convenient for them. So in order for them to do that, they need to have the casters so they can roll it around their property and then move it so we can safely service it on their service day. We also offer a commercial front-load cardboard program. And so on this, we're recommending a two, just like the trash program, a base rate increase of 2.7% on this one. And again, this program is primarily a six-yard customer. And so on this, this increase will be just a little over $2. And the recommendation for the same multi-bin discount from 16% down to a 15% discount. And then we have a special pickup fee that we charge for this. So currently, we charge $25 and our, on our trash, which is the same line of business, serviced with a bin, serviced as a bin, we charge $60 for a special pickup. What these special pickup fees primarily are on this cardboard program are if they are contaminated and we have to send a second truck back, which would be our, our front-load trash truck to pick it up as trash. So we felt that it's the same thing we're charging on the trash side, so we just want to match what we're charging on the trash as it's the same type of service. Our next commercial line of business is our roll-offs. So again, just to remind you, our roll-off is open for competition to the privates, so we do compete for this line of business. We have rate recommendations for this as well. We have a couple different ones. We are recommending to increase the set fee by $6.50. So every time we set one of those big roll-offs, it's a $6.50 increase. And then the haul fee, every time we haul that container to empty it, we're recommending to increase that by $3. And then the same thing with the tonnage fee that we charge just following that CPI increase of 6.2%, 6.22. On the next slide, I just wanted to show you what that means to the average one-time customer. A lot of times, customers will use these for special projects and one-time, and so they don't, they don't see it very often. So that increase will be $16.07 for the one-time trash customer, and for green, it's $17.30. That is all of the rate recommendations I have for today.
Councilmember Spillsbury.
I have a general question, and this is probably to the other presentations as well. When you do a comparison to other cities, are you comparing their proposed rates as well? Like, are they in the middle of proposing new rates or are we comparing it to their current rates?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, this, on this comparison, we compared it to their current rates, not what they're proposing.
That's, it's a moving target, right?
Right.
So like, maybe Chris had mentioned that other cities are kind of going through the same. So we'll wait and do it like once a year, kind of at the end of the year, so we kind of give everybody a chance to, just pick a time to do it.
Okay. Do other cities like typically do their proposed rates around the same time or?
I think it varies, I think.
Yeah, it depends by city, but there are a few that do somewhere between the January to March timeframe. And so with that 60-day window, we typically wait until November to update all the cities.
So we'll just update it then because we'll have a better sense of like what Chris was saying. We see that everybody's kind of moving in the same direction and we'll capture that.
Okay. My other question, with the commercial roll-offs, are, are any of these the same program like when neighborhoods request a roll-off in their neighborhood? This is just like a commercial customer, we're paying for a roll-off, correct? This doesn't have to do with, yeah, like the clean-sweep stuff? That's not any of this?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, correct. They are separate programs. So the neighborhood cleanup program was in one of the residential slides, and that's, on the bill, it's the green and clean fee.
Okay.
And so within there.
Oh, that goes, okay.
Correct. And so these are just the commercial customers on this side.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Haridi.
On the commercial side, what's, I'm assuming based on we have to compete with the market, who do you, who do you look at these pricing? Is it like waste management and others on the commercial side? I'm assuming we're being competitive because it's quite a, quite a few increases for commercial that you outlined. So I'm assuming we're in line or are we higher or lower?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Haridi, yes, we do look at the privates, some of those companies, and there's various other companies we look at. We are competitive. One of the things that we really pride ourselves on and one of the things that our customers really appreciate is our customer service. So we give a very high level of customer service, and then they love that they can call and actually talk to a person. They don't have to go through a phone tree, a long phone tree, wait a long time, do a bot chat or something like that. We have actual people there. We do have, the privates will come in and give them a sweet deal, and then they will increase their rates for, you know, they don't have a schedule like us. So we have our rate scheduled, they know what to anticipate, they know it's one time a year, we try to keep it as low as we can. And so that does help. We have a lot of customers that have left and gone to privates, which is part of the business, but they will come back to us because they really appreciate our customer service.
How many private companies are there for commercial here in Mesa?
Currently, we have between 25 and 30 permitted.
Oh, that's a lot.
So thank you. You know where I'm going to go with the commercial one, right?
I do.
You want to just say it for me?
No.
So, I mean, we're well below the rate of the private competitor. I mean, I think in our audit and finance, we talked about we're like two-thirds lower than most of them. Is that kind of accurate?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, we did do price comparisons for our roll-offs, I think is what you're talking about.
Yes, so just give us a comparison.
Oh, and the roll-offs, okay.
For our one-time customers, yes. Justin, you go.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, Council, for comparison, we did go out and just kind of do our own quote, and a private competitor would be around $900 for a 40-yard, and we're about $360.
Yeah. And I know we pride ourselves on our service because that's what we're, you know, that's what we do, and, and the customers really like that. I just consider, you know, raising some of our fees. I mean, we do these certain percentages, but yet we're, we're well below the competitor. But at some point, we need to raise our fees a little bit more. So I'm, I'm just going to put that.
Councilmember Freeman, are you, make sure I'm clear, is this the rate that's referred to on Slide 42?
Yeah, which, which rate? It's the commercial roll-off recommendations.
So is it the first one or is it both? There's the green waste and there's the one-time?
Correct, yes. And it's the, the one-time trash customer. The first one.
Okay. Let me take a look at it. See, I mean, we could at least bring a number posted higher and then we could have that discussion like.
$360 compared to the competitor at $900. We're not even half of what they charge.
Okay.
And so, and so the green waste customer, I mean, we, we probably do that separate because the other privates probably just can put all their trash and green waste in one container and they haul it away. So we're separating the two, which provides an additional service to a customer that wants to recycle their material versus just put it in the landfill.
Let us take a look at it, maybe we come up with a higher number for Monday.
Yeah. And for the record, the Salt River landfill is building their MRF center now. So I was out there yesterday and I didn't get a nail in my tire.
Of course, you did.
Why go to the dump for any other reason?
Okay. So now we have just the overview of the.
Just real quick, we just, yeah, just, just to show you the overall impact. It kind of goes that point of looking at it over a five-week-year window.
Yeah, so just to kind of bring everything together, I'll start at the bottom half of the table with that green bar in 22, 23. So starting with the orange boxes, other than the.
So now we have just the overview of the.
Just real quick, we just, yeah, just to show you the overall impact. It kind of goes that point of looking at it over a five-year window.
Yeah, so just to kind of bring everything together, I'll start at the bottom half of the table with that green bar in '22, '23. So starting with the orange boxes, other than the drought commodity charge and the interdepartmental adjustment that Chris and Seth talked about, everything in the orange box is the same base rate assumption that we had assumed in the adopted budget back in May. So there's no change between then and now. On the blue boxes, those rates are actually lower than what was included in the adopted budget. Solid waste was at, solid waste residential was at 2.5, staff recommendations now 2. Electric residential was at $2, $2 service charge and non-residential was at 250 and that's down to zero due to the challenges that the department spoke to. And then as Sherry just said, commercial and roll-off, these are factoring in competitiveness with private companies as well as cost recovery for those programs. To the right of that green bar are just the projections for this forecast. So we update these outer years as we update the forecast. Then kind of moving back to the top, the total net sources and uses, this is total revenues minus total expenses. And this includes the large projects, the Signal Butte expansion and the Central Mesa reuse pipeline that Chris and Seth spoke to, as well as other projects and CIP items that are being reinvested back into the system that the other departments spoke to. And these numbers also include those inflationary pressures that each of those departments spoke to. So you'll note that the net source and uses is negative throughout the forecast period, however, it is improving over time. And then last, towards the middle of the table, the ending reserve balance percentage. So in '22, '23, we're projecting a 24.4% balance, that's higher than the 20% in our financial principles. And then you'll see a drawdown of the fund balance over time, again, due to that negative net sources and uses. And in '27, '28, we end at a 10.4% fund balance. This is just slightly higher than the city's financial policy of having an 8% to 10% reserve balance.
So Mayor and Council, the caution is this is not an ideal forecast because we still, after the end of the forecast, we're still at a negative in net sources and uses, although you can tell we've made a significant improvement for where it is today. And that's the goal, is to begin to draw down the fund balance to get to that net neutral. But we have to over time, and that's why we spread these out over a long period of time, is to get what you would, ideally, you'd want that number, that 5.6 number in a forecast to be closer to zero. We're getting there dramatically, you can see, but it takes some time. And again, it's a forecast, so there's variability in there, but it's just a word of caution. Again, it's a, you know, it goes out there for a long time, but ideally, we'd prefer, you know, we're close, but we're not quite there, so we just, but we, you know, we're trying to be very conservative, but our goal ultimately would be have a healthy fund balance and have that at essentially zero. We're getting there, we're not quite there, so maybe as we, the next year, we'll get, you can tell we're improving, but we just don't want that to keep widening. That would be certainly not a trend we'd recommend.
Councilmember Spillsbury.
Okay, so remind me, the reserve balance percent, we like to keep it around 20, we don't want it to go under 10. Is that the range that we go for?
That's ideal, yeah.
Yeah, the financial principle says 20% or higher and the city's actual financial policy says at least 8% to 10% throughout the.
We don't want to go less than that.
So Vice Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, the principle that the city likes to do is 20%. That helps out with the credit rating agencies and lowering our interest costs for the debt. However, the policy that council has adopted for the financial policy is 8% to 10% and that's been the city's policy for many years, but we like to try to, the city tries to keep that at 20% in the outer years if possible, due to be able to, for that forecast, as the city manager mentioned, have a good, healthy fund balance, but also have positive net sources and uses that the credit rating agencies like to see and we like to see also.
Okay, and so then, is the way to create a higher percentage so it's closer to 20 by increasing rates, like is that the only?
No.
Like what's the, no.
You could reduce, it's a combination of.
Just all the different ways to.
You know, growth and revenue can come from rates, it can come from new accounts, right? Selling more utility. And we're seeing some of that, right? So growth, there's growth built into here, it's not just based on rates. Also trying to manage costs, keep the capital costs, keep the other commodity costs, that's hard to do right now in an era of inflation. So all, it's not just about the rates. We spend a lot of time talking about rates, but there's a lot of other ways we can, we try to manage even the debt service and when we schedule these big capital projects and how we pay for them, spreading that cost out over time. So there's a lot of buttons and levers that are going on here.
So we just make sure that the five-year forecast looks close to this, but then knowing that it's going to change each year.
That's why we just add on another year when we bring it to you.
And you did, just to make sure I understood correctly, the massive increase in the cost for those projects is included in this?
Yeah, we do have estimates for Signal Butte and the Central Mesa reuse.
Okay, because I would have thought that since those projects increased so greatly that this would have changed quite a bit more, but I guess that is not the way.
So Vice Mayor, yeah, Councilmember Spillsbury, one thing that Water Resources did mention is we do have the two in there, the central reuse pipeline and the Signal Butte expansion, but we took out the interconnect out of this, so it's out of this.
And that took those, okay.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we're trying to manage, as the city manager just mentioned, we're managing that debt and those capital costs to where we pushed it out of this forecast right now, but we do have it in the outer years.
So those millions of dollars just helped create the space for those projects? Okay, okay.
Councilmember Thompson.
Chris, is there any way that, you know, going back to Councilmember Freeman's point earlier about how the commercial roll-off, you know, we're two-thirds cheaper than our competitors, is there any way to shift some of that cost to reduce our residential water rates and still keep our ending reserve balance above 10%? So it's basically just shifting.
It doesn't change the rate, it would affect their, I mean, it's a different system. It would affect maybe a little bit of the ending here because each of them will roll through their revenues and expenditures and drop something out, but mixing solid waste with water, well, I shouldn't say it that way, but.
Because I'm looking at it as a.
I mean, it would help in the overall perspective here.
Right, I'm looking at it as a full enterprise.
Yeah, well, that's the only way to really look at it. The challenge though is water, water rates are so, they carry the day, right? They're just.
They're volatile.
Well, they're volatile, but they leverage so much more revenue than any other enterprise, right? Just because it's so big. I mean, the amount of revenues and the expenditures in water, I know Chris, you can throw it off the top of your head, but it's, I mean, you can see the numbers in water are tremendously outproportioned anything else.
Residential water revenues for '22, '23 are about 97 million and our roll-off program is about 2 million.
So it's hard to make up, you can, you could go right up that number, it's not going to make a difference.
Okay.
That, it's just, that's why water rates, stick with water rates because you just, nothing else compares. That's why I always try to talk about that. It's just not a, it's in a league of its own.
It's like 0.2%.
Yeah, it's just, but again, we try to balance all that out. This is why this is a very complex process and that's why you see this five-year, but when I'm doing it, when we're doing this, we look at the first year, look at the impacts of the residents, but we also are looking at this final column over here because we just don't want to make decisions today that are going to push out problems out to the
Just to go over the schedule, so for Monday, there's the notice of intent on the agenda, so as we kind of spoke to earlier, this just kind of starts the process. The public hearing has to be at least 60 days after the adoption of the notice. This is just kind of starting the timer. November 21st is when we'll introduce the utility rate ordinances, so as we discussed earlier, like having all those rate book changes ready to go, with December 1st being the public hearing for council action on utility rate adjustments and a January 1 effective date. And then if you'd like, I have that wastewater scenario, the three-point.
Oh, well, I think what we'll do is we'll bring it back in the 30 days with everything else. We'll post, what I just said for council, the follow-up is we're going to go, we need to come back to you with adjustment on, was it the commercial landscaping?
Yes.
To $10, right? And we need to increase the commercial roll-off recommendation so we have that option maybe by another $50. Does that work?
Mark wants more.
Well, that's what he's.
I just texted $50, I think puts us well below the threshold with the private sector. I think that makes Sherry very happy.
So we'll go with, we're bringing those to council for the notice.
Because to buy a roll-off bin today is extremely expensive.
I'm not, no, we're great. I'm just looking at, you know, I'm a colleague, I'm sure they're okay with it. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I needed. I needed that recap of what was increasing, what was decreasing.
We're keeping water the same, commercial landscaping, we decided to go up by another, it was $10, right?
Yes.
And then what we're saying on this, now Sherry, help me out, what, do you want to, the recommendations go up another 50, but these are two different ones, but if we do each by 50, is that going to create any problems? Do you have a difference between, I'm looking at the difference between the, I don't know if we're talking about the one-time trash customer or the one-time green waste customer? Are you talking about both?
Because one was 16 and one was 17, right?
Yeah.
I would just do them both.
Okay.
I mean, if I were a customer, I would gladly pay.
No, no, I'm just, I want to be clear what we're bringing to council.
Just do both.
Okay. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, so, so, a commercial roll-off has a couple different facets to it. So on here, this is the one-time trash customer. So this is the person who has, again, a construction project, a special project, they have it set in front of their house. So we have a couple lines of business with roll-off. And on the slide prior to this, it'll show our set haul and disposal fee. The one-time customers are going to get, those are the customers that we compare to the privates and they will get that increase of a set fee. The second line on there is our haul fee. So the haul fee is every time we haul that box, your one-time customers will get the box hauled. We have a very large portion of this business as well that is, they are permanent customers. And they are profitable, yes, and so we do have to be careful with that. The only thing that this customer will see an increase of is the $3 per haul. So there are different facets to the roll-off program. So if we want to say an overall increase of $50, it's going to affect those permanent customers, which are very beneficial and for us, and we have had privates come in and take those because they'll come in just like, you know, you had asked Councilmember Haridi, they'll come in with the deals and give them deals on these permanents because they know they can densify and really make money off of them, so they'll give them sweet deals. So I do agree with a $50 on the one-time, but I just wanted to be clear that it would be on the increase to the set fee.
Okay.
For the one-time customers. And then, I'm sorry.
Not the permanent customer.
And then for the green waste, that is, that is something that's already just a little bit higher. It's a really small portion of our business. We have about 9,000 hauls a year, there are only about 300. And so that is, we do want to encourage recycling. Those green boxes are just for people while we offer them, people sometimes will not take them just because of the small increase right now. And in addition to that, it has to be specifically green waste and a lot of people are not willing to do just the green waste and so they will go with the trash, which is why it's such a small line of business. So I just kind of wanted to give you a little more information on that.
So Sherry, if the $50 increase, it would be for the what, one-time set fee?
Correct.
Okay. You okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we'll make that change to bring to you on Monday.
Thank you.
You okay with that?
I am okay with that.
So we're only talking about those two increases for Monday night because we would need to make sure.
Different, different what you have here, yeah. We would add.
But the other questions about potentially lowering things, we don't need to talk about.
We'll bring those back about 30 days and.
So do you think we need to have more time Monday to talk about this or as part of the study session, you think it'll go pretty straight?
Well, it's up to you, but we will make those changes we just talked about right now.
Okay.
Put them in the document so that the notice will go out with those higher amounts.
Okay.
To change it, okay.
I think we're done with that.
Yeah. Sorry, there was kind of.
No, no, I don't know.
Anti-climatic there.
We made it through, we made it through and now we can move on.
And the more important thing is, this is the last time.
Oh, man. You're going to.
There's six more potentially.
Hey, where you're headed, you're going to be doing this all day long.
Yeah, why are you doing?
So we'll move on to item three on our council's study session agenda, which is acknowledge, receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. I have a motion by Councilmember Freeman and a second by Councilmember Spillsbury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, so that, motion passes unanimously. Then to our last part is our current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, you want to cover anything that you've been up to this last few days?
It's kind of a long meeting already.
All right, okay, all right. But I do want to mention Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Today is the first day of recognizing our Hispanic Heritage Month. It's from September 15th to October 15th, so we'll look forward to the celebrations. A lot of us attended yesterday the East Valley Hispanic, excuse me, I'm still on Hispanic Heritage, East Valley Partnership State Person's Luncheon, and they had a fascinating keynote speech by Ron Brownstein about partisanship and why that is occurring. I was interested and we heard from some of our state candidates. And last night, I attended a brief time at the Delta Hotel here in downtown Mesa for a happy hour, which they're doing monthly to bring together community members so that we can have some time to just get out and talk outside of a meeting. And I was able to meet a lot of the new ASU faculty and staff, so welcomed them and that was very nice. So that's all I have. And if that's not all, we have a transition from Scott Butler to Chris Brady, although they have the same shirt. So anybody watching, your eyes are not playing trick on you. We did start with Scott Butler, we're ending with Chris Brady, although the shirt remains the same.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I had the opportunity to do, provide, hand out a 30-year, a 30-year service certificate to Tody Landato. You might know, he worked out of Superior Springs, he was in the PIO office for Police Department many years ago here, so I felt like it was important for me to be there at 7 o'clock this morning to hand him the certificate, so thank you for allowing me to do that. And then just a reminder, we will have study session and a council meeting on Monday, September[1761.23]